That's all there is. Thank you.
City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burrus.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman John Patisse.
Here.
Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Nine people are here. We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, November 22nd, 2010, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First is the mayor's public announcements. I have one very important public announcement tonight. What you think of as ordinance 59010 in our packet, I think of as Lenny at Panino's ordinance, and I would like to thank Lenny for pointing out a problem with the liquor code that we have corrected. And it was a bureaucratic piece of nonsense. And so, thank you, Lenny at Panino's, for a much better ordinance than we had before. Proclamations are, this is Employee Learning Week, December 6th through 10th, and the month of December is National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month. That concludes my proclamations and public announcements. City Manager.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We have several items. So first, Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works, is here and would like to talk about our holiday trash collection schedule, as well as a reminder of snow parking restrictions. And as she comes up, we've also had many changes in our refuse recycling and green waste program. And I know that Suzette also wants to address that. And I know we have representative from a couple of the vendors that are here this evening. So Suzette, if you could start with holiday trash collections, the snow parking restrictions, and then any additional comments you'd like to make regarding our changes in the sanitary collection.
Okay. Hi Debbie. Presentation is on. Sorry. No. Solid waste, yes. While she's getting that started, I'll start off with snow parking restrictions going to effect December 1. I know it's hard to think about snow, but there is a prediction of snow for Thanksgiving Day. So, not accumulating, we hope, but it's still there nonetheless. So, I'm passing out cards, and these are what you need to know when it snows. And it lists what to do during a snow road parking ban, and also what to do during snow emergencies. And then there's some just general safety guidelines. These are the actual cards that we place on the windshield. We take these into areas where we have large areas of noncompliance, and we actually have them, we put them on the windshield along with the ticket normally. But we actually try to go out in advance, because we have some areas where we know people tend not to move, and we try to flyer those in advance of any type of snow emergency. And just a reminder that we have had, for the last three years, our first accumulating snow the first week of December. So, keep that in mind. And now I'm going to talk to you about some I got to do like this every time? All right, I'm going to talk about some of the changes that we have recently in the sanitation, solid waste changes. So I'm just going to quickly go through what these changes are, and who, and what residents should look for in terms of providers. So, the residential program, six units or less that are currently being collected, that were currently collected by the city, are now going to be collected by Groot, and that is a picture of their truck. It's a little difficult to see, but it's actually green and a beige color, so that residents will know, thank you, what to see. And for the residential recycling program, that's the city crews, the city trucks will be collecting residential recycling. And then, the other thing I wanted to talk to residents and remind them about is the special pickup program. If you have a 65-gallon cart, you are only allowed to fill the capacity of that cart. Anything, any additional trash that goes outside of that 65-gallon cart constitute a special pickup. So, what happens is, the day after the trash collection, we actually have the special pickup truck that goes through the routes that have been collected previously, and any additional trash that is left in the alley, residents are charged a special pickup for the collection. Residents that have a 95-gallon cart, they also, they start accumulating special pickup fees after they fill the capacity of the cart and plus one medium-sized garbage bag. So, and then, once again, all residents pay a special pickup fee for large bulky items and move-in, move-outs, et cetera. So, I wanted to remind, yes?
No, I just want to tell you that I had the worst special pickup today. Very embarrassed by the pile that some workers left behind my house. But your workers came and cleaned it up. So, I mean, I don't care how much you charge me for it. They did the most unbelievably fabulous job. I can't, I couldn't even go out and watch. It was so embarrassing. But they did a beautiful job, Suzette. And I would like you to privately tell me who they were, because they need to be rewarded in some way. I mean, any workers, are they city employees that do the special pickups?
Yes.
Right. They, we cannot pay these people too much to do this work. I mean, it, I know, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to recommend raises for several people here. So, thank you. I'm not
Can you please start with the Director of Public Works?
You explain to them how to do it, right? Anyway, I just wanted to say, if anybody has extra stuff and you need a special pickup, it will be done so responsibly, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to remind everybody of the fee schedules. $25 for the first three cubic yards, and $10 for each additional three cubic yard. And then, there are some examples that are listed, what constitute three cubic yards? One mattress, one couch, these are, or two chairs, or approximately 10 to 15 medium-sized garbage bags. The yard waste, the residential program, yard waste is collected by Groot as well. And yard waste collection ends the week of November 29. And what that means, during that week, your last collection day, whatever day of the week you, your collection occurs on, during that week, that will be your last yard waste collection. So, technically, Thursday of that week is the last time city trucks will actually be in the alley picking up yard waste. The condo program is collected by Lakeshore, and there is a picture of their truck. It's a blue and white truck. And then, I also listed the containers. And once again, it's a little difficult to see, but their containers are blue, and all the containers will be in place by November 30. And they are replacing the green Floodbrothers containers that were in the alley previously. And once again, the recycling for the city condo program is collected by city crews. And starting Friday, December 3rd, Friday will become the new recycling collection day for all city condos that are part of the city's program. The Thanksgiving holiday schedule, it's a little different in that for the city, our holiday, we have holidays on Thursday and Friday. So, whatever the city crews pick up, they will actually move their collection days to Thursday. So, the residential refuse, which is picked up by contractor, Thursday's route will be picked up on Friday. Condo refuse, which is picked up by contract, Thursday's collection will be picked up Friday. But the recycling collection for Thursday, for residential routes, will be picked up on Saturday, November 27. And then, condo recycling for Thursday and Friday will be picked up on Saturday, November 27. I also included in your packet, which is not up on the screen, we had some other concerns. So what I did was, I created a complaint log. That's the next-to-the-last page of your packet. And it lists kind of the, where complaints were like prior to the changeover versus where they are now. And as I indicated before, with the city crews, we had quite a few complaints for yard waste and garbage, because we were short-staffed. So we were running behind just about every day. So we got a lot of complaints. The collection by the contractor started November 1st, and we still have a few complaints. Most of those complaints are set outs. They are locations where it's a parkway pickup, but the rest of the block is in the alley. So, you know, just as the drivers get used to knowing where all the collections are, our numbers are going down. In the area of recycling, it's the same way. Now that the city is doing the collection, we've got a few more complaints than what the contractor had previously. But as we work those numbers out, we hope to see the complaints go down in terms of missed locations. And the condo complaints have already started going in the opposite direction. We had no condo complaints prior to the changeover, and then we had quite a few. And a lot of that was just the transition of putting the containers in place, and then getting, once the containers were in place, making sure collections occurred. And so, we're down to one complaint the week of November 15, and hopefully, we'll be back to zero after that. And the last item that I gave you is the postcard information that we plan to send out tomorrow. So you have an advanced copy of, which is basically a summary of the important information that I just went over. That's the postcard. Okay? Thank you very much. We're mailing them to the highlights, just like we do the highlights. So it'll go to every residential address, including condominiums. I think it goes to businesses too. I don't know if Eric is here or not. He can confirm that, but...
The council has no other questions? Thank you, Suzette. Mr. Lyons, if you could get the our nifty little switch doesn't seem to be working this evening. Next, I'd like to ask Carolyn DeLutry, the Executive Director of Downtown Evanston, to give a reminder regarding tomorrow's holiday tree lighting.
Thank you, City Manager Bob Quitz, and Mayor Tisdale, and City Council. I'm just here tonight to remind you about the holiday tree lighting. Here's a sample of the flyer, if you want to pass that around, that were ads in the newspaper and promoting the holiday tree lighting. And tomorrow evening, Mayor Tisdale and the gentleman dressed in red will be arriving at Fountain Square approximately 5:30 p.m. And you'll be greeted by the theater student, theater music students from the Music Institute of Chicago. And we are also supporting Connections for the Homeless, and we're asking people to bring gloves, hats, long underwear, things, as a donation to Connections for the Homeless. And after the tree lighting, we are going to head over to the Rotary International Building for some hot chocolate and some desserts, and listen to some music also. And Rotary International is offering free parking in their parking garage after 5:00 p.m. for anyone that's looking to come to the tree lighting. Also, I asked City Manager Bob Quitz if I could announce tonight and invite everyone to a ribbon cutting on December 1st at 9:00 a.m. at 820 Davis at Suite 151. We are launching our new Downtown Evanston gift card program. And it's a gift card that is MasterCard-based, and it's good at over 110 businesses in Downtown Evanston. And on the back of the flyer, and there's some at the table at the council chambers entrance, of listing all the businesses. They can be purchased in denominations of $5 up to $500, and used at any of those Downtown Evanston businesses. So, we ask that you give the gift of Downtown Evanston for the holidays. Thank you.
And the last announcement from our Director of Parks Recreation Committee Services, Doug Gaynor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The 36th Annual Net Cracker is going to be held at the Crown Center on December 10th through the 12th. We're going to have hundreds of the skaters that participate year-round in our skating program will be primarily the skaters in the show. Secondly, what I wanted to, I'd like to introduce to you our new senior ombuds person. Audrey Thompson came on board right around the first part of October. Since then, she's been doing a great deal of training, both at the state and local area. Has become not only trained, but is now a trainor, which will give us the opportunity to bring in interns and so on to help us with this program. She's already started working with the long-term care facilities, as well as residents. She's going to have office hours both at the Levy Center and here at the Civic Center. Audrey, if you'd like to stand up. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, we will come back to you after the first of the year with special order business, to talk about our senior program and the changes that we've made over the last several months. So, we'll look for that probably during the month of February. That concludes, Madam-
City Clerk, do you have communications?
No communications this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to change the agenda slightly and have citizen comment before the public hearing on truth in taxation for the property tax levy. First is Larry Bondi, then Mary Rose and Jerry Calligan. Does someone have a mic grant for Larry to use? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Larry Bondi. I live at 2040 Brown. Well, I told you, I'll be back. Sadly, you, the city council is going to make a big, big mistake by eliminating the inclusion specialist position. Staff member within the Department of Parks and Recreation and another staff member in the Department of Facilities Management are going to oversee the city's A.D.A. compliance. From what I understand, these staff members will oversee all new constructions in Evanston in terms of accessibility for people with disabilities. But do they understand fully about the A.D.A. and the titles to it, like the inclusion specialist does? I doubt it. Also, I heard a rumor that the city will assign duties of the inclusion specialist to its law department. This doesn't make any sense. The people in your law department doesn't know all about the A.D.A. may not be disability savvy. How can they adequately represent residents of Evanston? Also, I heard that the city council is doing what some other municipalities are doing, and that is cutting the A.D.A. position part-time. Clearly, the city of Evanston doesn't have a conscience when it comes to serving its residents with disabilities. I say shame on the Evanston City Council. By eliminating this position, you're failing your residents with disabilities. You're failing me.
Thank you. Next is Mary Rose. If you can go up there and give your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Rose, and I work-
I'm sorry, you have three minutes.
Okay. I don't think I need that much time. I work for Metropolitan Family Services of Evanston and Skokie Valley, and I've worked there for 20 years. I work in both the, at 820 Davis Street, and I also work in our Skokie office. I'd like to say, speak on behalf of the truancy ordinance. And we've had a truancy ordinance on the books, I think in Skokie, for about 12 years. It's been an extremely effective ordinance. The purpose is to give schools and social service agencies additional leverage in working with families. It's never anyone's intention to really make the families pay for the ordinance charges. It's really, it's a, it just gives us an extra tool to use as a leverage when we're working with families. Because truancy is simply a symptom of a problem within a family. And as a family therapist for 31 years, I can tell you, it's families have really complicated problems they're dealing with, and we do everything we can to help resolve those problems. And the truancy ordinance will just give us one more way to help fight those problems that these families are dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Jerry Calligan, and then Madeleine Ducre. That's fine.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Calligan from Freeborn &amp; Peters here on behalf of Violia Environmental Services. I was here about a month ago when you first considered ordinance 82-0-10, which is in your packet this evening as well. It was introduced a month ago. Although the two ordinances are different, they're significantly different from each other. So, I don't know if it's typical that one is introduced, and then another one comes up on the evening of the vote. The other thing I wanted to say is that you should have all received a letter dated November 17th from Violia, which gives some perspective to the transfer station, how long it's been around, how it came to be here, and the efforts that Violia has made in the last 10 years that it's owned the property to improve it. And that's all I'd like to say. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeleine?
Good evening, everyone. Madeleine Ducre. I would like to speak about the ordinance 51-0-10. Mr. Clark, at the, at a human service meeting, I think not too long ago, stated that the experts, experts at the school could not and did not help the students and the parents with their problems to keep the children in school. Now, I asked, I'm not going to talk long. I just would like to ask the city council tonight, before taking action, to discuss the issues openly on how this ordinance 51-0-10 will help to provide a more effective response to the needs of the truants, and will improve the lives of the students, the family, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lee McKaisak and Virginia Mann.
Lee Skinner, 1123 Neuse Street. It was 69 degrees today in the afternoon, and it made, it reminded me that global warming is something that we have to keep in the back of our minds. And we have a responsibility to keep our trees alive. They absorb carbon dioxide. So when you're thinking about whether we should vaccinate the elm trees, or whether we should continue to trim them to keep them healthy, or all trees, if we should keep forestry workers on staff, if we should plant new trees, the answer to all those questions is yes. We have an obligation and a responsibility to keep our trees alive. We're going to need them. I've spoken many times about the value of vaccinating elm trees, and we've clearly shown that it's less expensive. I have heard from a few aldermen that they still can't figure out a way to find the money to just get over the hump and start doing all the elms. But next year, or the year after, you will have more money in your budget. So if you can't find the money right now, what happens when we go over budget cutting all the elm trees down? You've got to find the money and vaccinate all of your public elm trees. I urge you to do that. I also urge you to keep the two forestry workers on staff. These are the people that will inject the trees, keeping your costs down. They will also trim the trees, keeping them healthy. And nothing bothers me more than when we spend a lot of money and have nothing to show for it. So, if we let these forestry workers go, we're going to spend a lot of money doing storm cleanups and paying a lot of overtime. But what we're not going to have at the end of spending all that money is healthy trees. And I would say the same thing about the elm tree vaccinations. We spend a lot of money cutting them down, but have nothing to show for it. I would also urge you to continue to plant new trees. They absorb carbon dioxide, and they keep our city beautiful. They keep our property values high. They keep Evanston a destination that people want to come to. And I love that you hired somebody that, you know, we have a brand now. The city of Evanston is a brand, so we should protect our brand and keep our city beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Mann, 3004 Normandy Place. For about the last 10 years, my neighbors and I have joined together to inject our elm trees on Normandy. And since then, we have not lost a single one of them to Dutch elm disease. Today, since the injection program started six years ago, the city injects about four, injects four of our eight 80-year-old trees. We inject the others at our own cost, because we know that our block would look quite different without four of those trees. And especially different if we lost all eight of those trees to Dutch elm disease. Tonight, the council has the opportunity to vote to maintain the current Dutch elm disease injection program, or to take it a step further and inject all of the elm trees. Quite frankly, it won't affect me or my neighbors on Normandy Place, because we're going to inject our trees, as we have done for the past 10 years. The people you will impact are those that believed the city council was protecting their elm trees six years ago when they voted to inject every single one of them. And I personally have been very surprised to hear from many people during the past few weeks that they did not know that every elm tree was not being injected. Many people, as I said, don't know that the trees aren't being injected. They don't know that you can inject them with private funds. They don't have the time or the resources to collect the funds and inject them. So tonight, I asked the council to think about whether or not you're going to inject every elm tree, and think about the people who you're going to impact. Because you're not going to impact me and my neighbors on Normandy Place. You're not going to impact Mimi Peterson and her neighbors on Wesley. You're not going to impact Lee Skinner and her neighbors on Neuse Street. You won't impact the Bent Park neighbors who got together to raise funds for injections, or the women down on Lincoln and Prairie who got together and injected, I believe, nearly 100 trees. We're all going to make sure that our elm trees live and protect the character of our neighborhood. Instead, think about why the folks in South Evanston, on Dobson, or Maulford, or Brummel, shouldn't have beautiful elm trees on their parkways? Or why the folks in East Evanston, on Judson or Hymen, should continue to see the character of their streets diminished by the loss of beautiful, majestic, mature elm trees? Or why the people in West Evanston, on Dewey and Florence and Wesley, should continue to see trees that are 75 to 125 years old come down because they don't meet an arbitrary and ill-advised size requirement? The Dr. Seuss character of the Lorax may speak for the trees, just as Mimi and Lee and I have the past few weeks. Tonight, the Evanston City Council has an opportunity to speak for the people of all parts of Evanston who love their trees, and who expect their city government to act in a fiscally and environmentally responsible manner and protect their natural resources. So my request to you tonight is that you do the right thing and vote to inject all elm trees. And I have one other request, and this request is for members of the media. I hope that if the council does not choose to inject every public elm tree in the city, that next summer, when they cut down that very first elm tree, that every member of the media who is in this room and watching this program tonight shows up and covers that story, so that the people of Evanston understand the impact of tonight's decision. And that when they cut down the second tree, and the third tree, and the fifth tree, and the 10th-
Virginia, you're going to have to wrap it up a little.
That you cover all of those trees, so that the people of Evanston can clearly understand the financial impact that this decision has on their tax dollars and on the character of their community and their city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, city manager's public hearing.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager and City Treasurer, will lead us through that process. Mr. Lyons?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Each year, the city provides a legal notice for a public hearing regarding our tax levy. This notice was placed in the Evanston Review on November 11th, 2010, and as was included in this notice, it provided for the levy amounts for three ordinances, which I will restate for the record. Ordinance 94-0-10 is the city levy for the general fund and fire and police pension funds, for a total of $30,452,282, and this amount excludes debt service. The increase from last year's levy covering these items is $1,017,981. The second ordinance is 93-0-10, and this is the township levy, consisting of the town levy and the general assistance levy. The town levy is for $311,319, which is the same as last year, and the general assistance levy is for $1,038,477, which is also the same as last year, for a combined levy of And finally, we have the special levy, which is for Special Service Area Number Four. This is ordinance number 95-0-10. The Special Service Area Number Four provides a majority of the funding for downtown Evanston, and the levy for 2010 is $395,918. All of these levies, as listed, are as extended, meaning that that includes the loss factor as a part of the levy themselves. The, just by way of background, I did not provide it in the above mention, but the fire and police pension amounts are respectively $6,188,555 and $7,588,132, and those are based on the extrareal analysis, the 2009 extrareal analysis. And again, our debt service levies, those levies are filed with the county at the time we issue debt, and therefore, the county does issue those bond ordinances, I'm sorry, those levies themselves on our behalf, although not a part of this process. I can relate that the debt service levy for the 2010 levy will be $9,957,000. And then, we also have Special Service Area Number Five, which is just a debt service levy for that special service area, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no lights, I think you explained that very well.
So, Madam Mayor, these items all appear later on your agenda for introduction. I think it would be appropriate, as any members of the public who have not had a chance to speak, who wish to speak under the truth of taxation hearing, to do so at this time. Otherwise, this appears on your agenda and would be introduced through the consent calendar.
Does anyone want to speak? I think maybe Betty Esther's coming. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2130 Church Street. We had the levy, the amount, and everything, and this earlier this year, you had voted to go to a fiscal year of setting the operation of the city. When are, is you going to combine the levy for your capital to improvement, and your debt service, and your general operation, all in the same package? So we, as a community, will know what we are spending going out that year. These figures are humongous, but then later on, when everything, people during the summer, whenever it comes out, the capital to levy, it comes out, this is what we're going to do for capital to improvement, we set these, and we, as a community, sometime miss those. So I'm hoping that you will think about it, and considering combining all of these levies through these funds, the general funds, the operation, capital to improvement, and your special section, although, what is section five? You told me about four, but you didn't tell me about five. We would like to know where Special Section Five is for. We know four is downtown. What is five servicing?
Mr. Lyons, did you want to respond?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Special Service Area Five deals with the special service area that was adopted on June 27th, 1994, and it is a part of the downtown district. And the city, at that point in time, looked at the issuance of $5 million in special service area bonds. Special Service Area Five pays the debt service on those bonds, and we're anticipating a payment of $428,756 for the 2011 budget for those bonds.
Thank you. Seeing no one else who wants to speak, as far as I can tell, that concludes-
Yes, Madam Mayor. We would ask, then, that the council consider these items as part of your regular agenda.
Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda? You want a motion to adjourn? You, city clerk?
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Nine to zero. The public hearing is adjourned. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item on our consent agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, November 8. City of Evanston payroll through November 7, the amount of $2,268,448.88. The city of Evanston bills are to be approved through November 23, in the amount of $3,938,899.79. The city of Evanston credit card bills through September 30th, 2010, $87,844. First item for action is approval of field reporting software purchase for the Evanston Police Department. It's a sole source purchase of the software, in the amount of $92,568 from Sun Guard Public Sector. Payment is through the emergency telephone system budget. Next is approval requested for contract extension to purchase furniture for FY 2011 from OEC Business Interiors. This is a one-year extension with 2007 pricing discount schedules. Next is item A 3.3. We're requesting your approval to give the city manager authorization to sign the organization certificate for Illinois Green Infrastructure Program grant application for the Civic Center Parking Lot Project. The improvements are $415,000, which would include the IEPA grant funding of $225,000, and the capital improvement program funding of $190,000. Next is approval of authorization to access a line of credit of $10 million through Chase Bank. This is due, this will only be used should the state of Illinois and other funding sources fail in a timely manner to deliver funds that the city is expecting. Next is item A 4-
Could you remove that, Alderman Rainey, please?
The credit, line of credit?
No, A 4.
Oh, yes. A 4 is off the, oh, it's already off. That's off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next item is also off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. That's A 5, the utility easement. Next is Resolution 59 R 10, which authorizes the manager to execute Amendment 2 to the city's natural gas supply agreement with Centerpoint Energy Services. We're expecting to lock in a price of 50 to 52 cents per therm, which will also require locking in a monthly fixed quantity. Next item is the city budget, which is also off the consent agenda. Next item is Resolution 62 R 10, which is our support for Safe Roots, Safe Roots to School Program, joining with District 65 for a grant application to the Illinois Department of Transportation for up to $250,000 for reimbursable expenses to the city for infrastructure improvements in the public way. Next, Resolution 63 R 10 authorizes the service center apartment lease agreement with Stephen Griffin, the Community and Economic Development Director. The lease term is from November 8 to 10, to November 28, 2011. Next, Resolution 64 R 10 authorizes the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the purchase of real estate located at 72729 Howard Street. This is for action, and the funds for payment will be from the Tiff District. The same source of funding for Resolution 65 R 10, which authorizes the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the purchase of real estate located at 62931 Howard Street. The same, it's in the amount of $237,650, and will be paid from the increment of the tax increment financing district. Next is item A 12, which is Ordinance 59010 is for introduction and action. I'm going to move introduction, and the committee chair will deal with the suspension of the rules. This is, this is an ordinance that would amend portions of the city code to permit certain changes in liquor license classifications, having to do with a current licensee not having to submit all new applications for a reduction or an increase in their liquor license, given certain restrictions. Next is Ordinance 88010, which amends the city code subsection 4126S to remove time restrictions on political or campaign signs, and this is to comply with state ordinance, state statute. Next is Ordinance 94010, 2010 City of Evanston Tax Levy. It is for introduction. Next is Ordinance 93010, 2010 Special Service Area Number Four Tax Levy. This is also for introduction. Next item is the Township Tax Levy that is off the consent agenda. Item A 17 is also off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Ordinance 80010 is for action tonight. That has to do with an additional tax imposed on gasoline, a motor fuel tax, going from 3 cents to 4 cents. Next is Ordinance 81010, which amends the municipal utility tax. This is going to be based on an average electric utility rates for most residential and business customers of approximately 6.66 percent. However, the rates vary based on usage. Next is Ordinance 82010, which I am assuming is off the consent agenda. Alderman Grover? Yes, okay. Next is A 21, Ordinance 87010, which amends Title VII Public Ways, Chapter 2, Section 5 of the city code, to increase the right-of-way permit fee, and this is, let's see, the right-of-way obstruction permit fee was last increased February 2007, and this is for action tonight. Next, Planning and Development. P 1 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. P 2 grants a special use for a Type 2 restaurant at 1307 and 1/2 Chicago Avenue in the B 1 District, Business Zoning District. This is for introduction. Next is item P 3, which is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Under Human Services, Ordinance 51010 amends Chapter 6 of the code to create a community accountability truancy ordinance. Is this on or off the consent agenda? Hearing, no objections. It remains on. Next is H 2, which is, amends various sections of the code having to do with dogs, cats, animals, and fowl. Next is Resolution 66 R 10, which is a resolution that endorses our action of supporting ward manufacturing companies' application to the Cook County Assessor for 6B status for new construction at 222 Main Street. Madam Mayor has made several appointments. One is to the Electrical Commission, Brian Lambert. Number two is to the Plan Commission, Patricia Ledzma Libana. With that, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. City clerk, would you call her all?
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The consent agenda passes. Alderman Jean-Petis, Administration and Public Works.
For item A 4, move approval of authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Northwestern University for the design, construction, and funding of the proposed Sheridan Road traffic signal at the Northwestern University entrance south of Garrett Place. All costs associated with the design and construction of the proposed traffic signal will be reimbursed by Northwestern University.
Second? Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you will notice, there are two items with regard to this traffic signal on the agenda this evening. This first one is specific to the agreement between the city and Northwestern regarding payment of the traffic signal. And I will address both of these, I hope briefly and separately. Part of the direction that the council gave to the city manager was that, as part of his negotiation with the university, there should also be discussion about the comprehensive impact of development east of Sheridan Road on traffic patterns on Sheridan Road, and their impact on the residential neighborhood to the west, and also on pedestrian safety. I don't believe that that, that discussion actually took place in the way that we were hoping. There was a general discussion with staff about, about the impact of the proposed parking garage, but that was not the purpose- but that was not the purpose of the direction that council gave to the city manager. What I would like to see is, I would like to see, especially since we now know that the university is planning on building a new business school on the parking lot that is just adjacent to the Allen Center, which will bring even more traffic at the location south of Garrett, that I would like to see a committee formed to talk with the university regarding their, the impact of their 50-year framework plan upon Sheridan Road, upon the neighborhood to the west, and upon pedestrian safety on the east side of Sheridan. And I think that's a very important discussion to happen. So I'm sorry that Northwestern wasn't forthcoming about that information when they met with the staff on the 27th of October, but hopefully we will bring that to fruition in the future. So I encourage the city council to support me in referring this to Administration and Public Works, at least the discussion of formation of a committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Well, I can only speak to myself, but I'm comfortable that my intentions were met in the process, and I'm comfortable going forward, and I don't know that there's a need for a committee from my perspective and my intentions in giving prior direction to the city staff.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, it's, well, I guess it's a money issue because they're paying for it. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Sorry about that. Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman John Patyce.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Seven to one.
Seven to one. The motion passes.
One accused, yes.
And one recused. Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move adoption of Resolution 60-R-10 to grant a utility easement to Northwestern University in order to cross Sheridan Road approximately 250 feet east of Chicago Avenue to accommodate future Northwestern University utilities. The easement will be granted for a 25-year period. No city funding is required for these utility crossings. Northwestern University will fund the project and will be assessed an initial annual utility easement fee of $1,102.50, which equals 50 cents per square foot for 2,205 square feet. This fee will be escalated by, this fee will escalate by 2.5 percent per year for the 25-year period. Can I get a second?
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and I see no lights. Does anyone want to speak to this issue? City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Patyce.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Eight, zero. One recused.
Eight, in favor and one recused, the motion passes. Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The next item is A 7, and I don't know whether we want to hold this towards the end of the discussion, because this is Resolution 61-R-10 regarding the approval of the fiscal year 2011 budget of the city of Evanston. I mean, we could move it now and open it for discussion. There are a number of other items.
Do you think there are other items that impact the decision on the budget?
Um, well, there are other items, because we have certain fees that we're raising, we're assessing. But, fine, there's no real dissent.
Let's go for it, Alderman.
So let's do it. Okay, move approval of Resolution 61-R-10. This is the fiscal year 2011 budget of the city of Evanston.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we approve the budget. Alderman Wynn.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe the budget, this budget process has been a very good one and very productive for all of us and for the citizens of Evanston despite its difficulty. I do want to raise one final issue, and I think it's one that we heard tonight during, from the speakers, that to inoculate all of our elm, public elm trees, which would be a cost of approximately $75,000, does make fiscal and environmental sense. And I urge my fellow council members to amend the budget, to take the funds from the city manager's fund, which is, I apologize, without my glasses, this is difficult. It's the miscellaneous business operations, 1525, in order to inoculate all of our trees and so that we can then have protection for all our elms and save ourselves money in the long run. It doesn't, frankly, it doesn't matter how you feel about the trees. This makes budget sense. So I move that we amend the budget for that item.
I second that.
All right. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. According to the memo that we did get, with staff's recommendation of how we could inoculate all the elm trees, I'm still uncertain, and I hope this doesn't mean that we're actually adding a year to the cycle. It does say here that the, it would be 700 trees at risk for one year period, and I think that's because we're trying to squeeze the additional trees into a, I'm not clear at all, obviously. It does suggest that there would be some risk here.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Tendem, we've gone through the memo that has been provided to you regarding the sequence and the cost of this. It's $70,000 for a year, and it would be a three-year cycle. Quite honestly, I think that if the council would like us to move forward with this, we would like to have you allocate the money, if that's your pleasure, and then come back to you probably right after the first year to discuss how this would actually be operationalized. Because I think as we look at the schedule, this is going to be the heavy schedule. We're planning on inoculating over 1,000 trees in 2011. This would be an additional increment of that. I think we need to go back and make an assessment of our staffing ability to, just the number of days that are available to do this, if we would have to contract for services and to come back with a report. But if it's the direction of the council to allocate the funds, we will come back with a plan to implement your wishes.
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I found the memo very helpful, and, but I'm curious about this comment that the current balance of reserve funds that has been set aside for 2011 is 300, I'm sitting down because I can't read this standing up, for 2011 is $398,216. It says this balance does not include the scheduled 2010-11 allocation of $115,000 listed on the first table. These reserve funds could potentially be used to offset the entire 2011 program expenditures plus the majority of the 2012 program. So I'm not, I'm not clear, why would we not use that and instead use from the miscellaneous funds? Although I, to get the money, I would support the miscellaneous funds also. And also, in addition to that, would you clarify, does this mean that all significant elms under 30 inches would be inoculated, except for those that are 10, that are too small to be inoculated?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, our plan, if the council wishes to direct this, is to come back to you with a schedule that would accomplish that. Right now, we're doing it in a three-year cycle. We're not proposing with the $70,000 that we would then take on those additional 800 trees in one year, but we are proposing that would be then added to that three-year cycle.
Well, okay, but would we start them? Would we start? Have those trees, are you saying those trees were never inoculated?
Those 800 trees were not part of that process. So if the council's directing us to add them, then we would come back to you with an appropriate schedule and also look at the funding. It's 210, $220,000. $70,000 should take care of that for the first year of a three-year cycle. We'd like to come back to you, though, if that is your direction, come back to you in January with a more complete report as to how we will actually then implement it. Because if we are able to do it faster using fund balances, using contracted labor, we would like the opportunity to sort through that, if that's your direction.
Right. That's good. But what about this $398,000 in reserve funds? What is that?
Much of that has been spent in order, at your last meeting, to put that back into the budget. We would again want to come back to you with a more complete plan, with the full accounting of all of that money, and then the direction moving forward on how we would cover all the trees in a new three-year cycle to include all of them.
Okay.
Alderman Grover. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm assuming that the 840 trees were not included in the program because of their size.
Correct.
In accordance with the manufacturer's recommendation. I'm assuming the manufacturer has some data or something to show of the success or lack of success inoculating trees of less than 10 inches to support the recommendation. Are we creating an additional risk to those smaller trees? That's what the memo suggests.
The memo, the memo is specific that anything under 10 inches is not recommended by the manufacturer or the chemical because of the continuous injection of holes in the base of the tree. Anything above 10 inches is recommended. One of the reasons, well, there were several reasons that the 10 up to 30 inches was not, were not injected. One was finances. The other was, when this program was implemented, there wasn't any real conclusive data of its success. And after the several years that we have now been injecting the tree, we have found success of about over 99 percent.
Read that. But what I'm interested in is why, the basis for the manufacturer's recommendation. There's, I mean, the.
The manufacturer does recommend anything above 10 inches.
And not for anything under 10 inches.
That's correct.
And that's what I'm interested in, is why.
Well, the fact that the 10-inch, at the base of the tree, you are continually, every three years, you are putting hole, holes into the trunk of the tree, and it's too small for it to survive continuous holes into the trunk of the tree.
So I'm guessing the manufacturer would have some lost data, some numbers that suggest that there is a mortality rate from the injections of smaller trees.
I'm sure we could get something from the manufacturer, sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be important.
We can get that for you.
And again, Alderman Grover, members of the council, I think, again, if it's the council's direction to enhance the program, we think that the allocation of $70,000 is appropriate. But I think we'd want to come back and come with a more complete explanation of the process and also to pick up some of these questions and have complete answers for you.
Alderman Wynn.
Well, I would like to amend my motion, if it's necessary, to incorporate what the city manager is telling us. But I would like to essentially, to make sure that my motion is that we inject all of the, all of our public elm trees above 10 inches, and that my understanding is that it's approximately between $70,000 and $75,000 a year, and that we will hear back from the city manager and our forestry staff in January as to what the schedule will be for that. Would that be what you're saying, city manager?
Alderman Wynn, members of the council, that's fine. We will, I will hold and abeyance the funds so that if we come back to you and recommend that $70,000 would be necessary, my sense is, sitting here this evening, that it will be necessary. So if you'd like to leave that as part of your motion so that that money's been allocated, and then we'll come back in January for a broader discussion, but I would feel more comfortable if this is the council's wishes to just go ahead and direct that those funds be adjusted to the Parks and Recreation.
And that's, and that's what my understanding was. And what you're telling, my understanding is also that you're saying that you're not quite sure how the schedule, you don't know what the schedule, how the schedule will look right now.
That's correct.
But in January, you will know how the schedule will look. But nevertheless, we do need to allocate the additional $75,000.
That's correct.
All right. Then that, just for clarification's sake, my motion is to allocate the $75,000 for inoculating all Dutch elms, public elms, above 10 inches, and then we will wait to hear from the city manager in January as to what the inoculation schedule will be. All right.
Alderman Rainey.
But I would second that. I still want to know, you said that the $398,216 has pretty much already been allocated, except it says this balance does not include the scheduled 2010-11 allocation of $115,000. So what exactly does that mean?
Excuse me, Alderman Rainey, could you tell us the date of the memo that you're reading?
The one that we got this week.
Oh, okay.
Page 162.
November 19.
Yeah, November 19. And I've copied and pasted it in another document, so.
Alderman Rainey, I'm not satisfied, sitting here this evening, that all of those funds are not otherwise allocated, and would ask that the council give us, until coming back in January, to give you a more precise report on that. If indeed additional funds are available for inoculation in 2011, we will let you know at that time.
Does that answer you?
Well, I'm, you know, I hear what the manager's saying, and I know the motion, I seconded it, I seconded. But I'm still not comfortable that, I mean, you are saying that we will, the money that we have voted, or that we have a motion on the floor about, is sufficient to accompany the motion that all public elms be inoculated over 10 inches, the significant elms under 30 and over 10.
And Alderman Rainey, members of the council, what I'm not able to commit to this evening is a specific timeframe as to when we will accomplish that additional inoculation. Would ask that we come back in January to give you that more specific information.
But it would seem to me, and maybe Paul could help us with this, that the inoculations have to be started in a fairly reasonable timeframe, in that time of year when they can be inoculated. We can't wait two or three years to begin.
And Alderman Rainey, I would like to come back to you with an approach that perhaps will allow us to do the first cycle in less than three years, but I'm not able this evening to tell you that we'll be able to do that, and would ask an additional six weeks' time to do that. I don't want the council to allocate, I'm not sure, as we sit here this evening, the resources that it will take to do that all in one year. I'm told by the forestry staff that that would be a difficult charge. I would like additional time to talk with them, to devise a plan that will allow us to do it in as expeditional a sway as possible, but I do not have that plan before me this evening.
And we'll know that in January.
That is my intention, yes, ma'am.
All right. Seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded that we take $75,000 from the contingency fund and allocate it to injecting all public elms larger than 10 inches in diameter. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover.
No.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Burris.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman John Patyce.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Six to three.
Six to three. The motion passes. Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Yeah, I think we're still on the budget.
Yes. I think we are. Does anyone have anything further to say on the budget? I see no lights. Going once? Going twice? Going twice?
To adopt as amended.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to adopt the budget as amended, and it's been seconded. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
No.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, the budget is adopted. Now, Alderman Jean Baptiste, you have one more.
Yes, I'm going to move on.
He was on eight twelve.
Yeah, I'm on eight twelve now.
Eight twelve.
Eight twelve, move to suspend the rules so that we may adopt ordinance fifty-nine dash oh dash ten.
Second.
City clerk, would you call the roll?
Suspend the rules.
It's been moved to suspend the rule.
That's right.
Second.
Sorry, it's second. Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item eight sixteen, move, um-
No, we're on eight twelve.
Oh, that was just, yeah, that's right. Move adoption of, what is it, ordinance fifty-nine oh dash ten.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, seeing no lights. City clerk, would you call the roll to adopt ordinance fifty-nine oh ten?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. The local liquor commissioner thanks you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Eight sixteen, it's a request that we let, we adopt the tax levy ordinance ninety-five dash oh dash ten, which levies the annual property tax for the Evanston Township. This is, this is for introduction.
Second.
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 Still voting on?
Alderman Rainey took it off the consent to vote no.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance ninety-five oh ten.
Eight sixteen.
Seeing no lights, city clerk, if you're ready.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Seven to two, the motion passes. Alderman.
Eight, eight seventeen. Move adoption of proposed ordinance thirty-six dash oh dash ten, by which the city council would amend section ten dash eleven dash five, Schedule VG of the City Code to establish, what's the name?
Eight seventeen.
That's why I'm, I'm-
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, sorry.
Thank you. I was on the roll, so I gotta back up for a minute. Okay, to establish a traffic signal at Sheridan Road and the Northwestern University entrance south of Garrett Place. Funding for the project will be provided by Northwestern University per the inter-agency agreement, also included in the, in the November eighth, two thousand and ten and November twenty-second agenda. Okay, so.
Been moved and seconded, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Alderman Jean Baptiste. I'm sorry to wreck your roll there. This is the second, the second half of the Sheridan Road traffic signal project that I wish to address tonight. This would establish a signal in the mid-block, between Library Place and Garrett, and has a lot of problems with it. I think this is probably the best that we're going to be able to do, but in the future, I think we would like to see traffic signals at actual intersections rather than located in the middle of blocks. This puts a significant part of the population at risk, especially the students on the east side of Sheridan Road who are trying to ride their bikes and walk and text and do everything on that ten-foot wide sidewalk on the east side of the, the street. Again, what we'd like to see, and what I understand from our traffic engineer, is that there will be sort of a street created there. There will be some protections put in place for pedestrians, and the hope is that there will be, that will be enough protection so that the increased traffic that is certainly going to be associated with this construction will not negatively impact those students who are walking on the east side of Sheridan Road. We are also concerned about the one last living taxpayer on the west side of Sheridan Road who owns a residence close to this traffic signal, and my understanding is that there will be some protections put in place for her. I would like to make sure that those protections run for the amount of time that she owns her property and then expire at the end of that time. So I, again, I, this is not a perfect process. This is a very, very difficult intersection. I want to work very closely with city staff and Northwestern University to make sure that all of the pedestrians on the east side of Sheridan Road are going to be safe and that the neighborhood on the west side of Sheridan Road is not negatively impacted by additional traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, seeing no further lights. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Sorry. Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Seven to one, and one-
Seven ayes, one nay, and one recusal, the motion passes.
Okay, lastly, eight twenty. Move adoption of proposed ordinance eight-two dash oh dash ten, by which the city council would enact a new Title VIII, Chapter twenty-six, entitled Solid Waste Transfer Station Fee. This matter was introduced at the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and ten city council meeting. Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is this the same ordinance that was presented to council the last time it was on our agenda?
Our corporation council, there was a Scrivener's error on the version that was introduced at the prior council meeting that referenced, there was a, one reference to the city owning the transfer station that was cleaned up in the text. That's the only change, it is a non-substantive change. It was a Scrivener's error.
I wasn't part of the meeting with Violia or really part of the discussion at AMPW. Is there a, a letter from Violia that went to all of us explaining Violia's thoughts on the ordinance?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's my understanding that Violia did issue a letter to council and the mayor indicating some of their concerns and articulating some of their reservations relative to the proposed ordinance.
Which staff has not seen?
Was addressed to council, you understand, Mr. Farr? All right, so.
That's my understanding, Alderman.
I did receive a letter.
You did?
Uh-huh. I did too.
Okay, but-
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, since, since the full council's not received the communication and staff has not seen it, I'm certainly uncomfortable at this point advising the council in any way if, if there were issues raised by a company doing business lawfully here in Evanston that we've not had, all of you have not had a chance to review and, and staff has not had a chance to review. So perhaps it would be prudent to put this item over to a future meeting so that all of you can see the communication and we can-
As a budget implication.
I'm sorry?
It's part of the budget.
It's part of the budget.
The budget, which starts on, the fiscal year starts on March the first, so I, I think there's time to do that. I, I would hate for you to, to take action on something, especially if the, the main payer of this proposed fee is raising issues that you have not had a chance to see. So I think that it would be appropriate to continue the item.
Move to hold it over then.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to hold it over. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, is this two dollars per ton included in the budget? And what is the total amount? What's the total revenue for the two dollars?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand. If we are going to hold this over and not vote on this tonight, then I highly recommend we cut two hundred and twenty-five thousand out of this budget. It makes absolute, it, it's the same old story as, as over-projecting revenues in the past. We over-project revenues, we get caught in a pinch at the end. We either, we either commit to this and vote for it or not. Can somebody read us the letter? I mean-
I, I don't have a copy of it.
I mean, if it was so important, it would have been delivered to our house. It was, I never received this letter. It was in an email, and I'm trying to pull it up right now. Well, it probably went to spam or something, I don't know. But I, I have real problems voting on this budget tonight without this major, this is a quarter of a million dollars, and we're saying that it doesn't count, it doesn't matter, and we're not going to do it. So either we shouldn't vote on the budget, we should include it in, or we should hold the budget. Or, or cut two hundred and twenty-five thousand, it's the only responsible thing to do. Look at your emails on eighty, the seventeenth of, of November. Well, could somebody just read it so we can see if there's a reason for us not to vote on this tonight?
Perhaps council from Violia has a copy that we could have? No, 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 no. I'd be happy to read it if I have it.
Also, the email cover sheet to everyone on the council's home here as well.
Dear Mayor and members of the city council, Violia ES Solid Waste Midwest LLC is the owner of the solid waste transfer station at seventeen-eleven Church Street. The company is aware that the city is considering the imposition of a fee on trucks delivering solid waste to the transfer station. It appears the proposed fee is in furtherance of the city's efforts to cause Violia to close the transfer station. Before taking action on the ordinance that would impose the fee, Violia requests that you take the following facts into consideration. On October seventeenth, nineteen eighty-three, the city council approved unanimously the siding of the transfer station at seventeen-eleven Church Street. In nineteen eighty-four, permits to develop and operate the transfer station were issued by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. The original operator of the transfer station was Active Service Company. At some time during the nineteen nineties, the transfer station was sold to Browning Ferris Industries. Violia acquired the transfer station from Browning Ferris in two thousand and commenced operating the facility out of a supplemental permit issued by the IEPA on July eleventh, two thousand. After acquiring the transfer station, Violia began planning to improve the facility. When Violia acquired the property, waste transfer operations occurred outdoors as there was no transfer building on the premises. Throughout two thousand and two and two thousand and three, Violat and its representatives attended numerous meetings with the city's site plan review committee and the local community to discuss Violia's plans for removing a substandard building on the property and constructing a new transfer station building. In addition, Violia proposed the installation of a fourteen-foot pre-cast concrete screening wall in the unimproved eight-foot wide alley immediately west of the site. The meetings with the site plan review committee and members of the community resulted in the city's support for the improvements proposed by Violia. Specifically, the city manager sent a letter to IEPA supporting Violia's application for a supplemental permit for authorization to construct the new transfer building. In addition, the city granted a fence variance and easement to allow Violia to construct the screening wall. The IEPA issued the supplemental permit in two thousand and four, and the transfer station building, a new truck scale, a new stormwater detention basin, and the screening wall were constructed thereafter. The total cost of improvements exceeded three-point-five million dollars. When the improvements were constructed by Violia and supported by the city, the transfer station property and surrounding properties were zoned in an industrial classification. However, shortly after the transfer station improvements were completed, the city rezoned Violia's property and some, but not all, of the other industrial properties in the area to a residential classification. Violia did not request the rezoning. Following the rezoning activity, the city approved the development of residential condominiums on properties contiguous to the transfer station property on the east. The condominiums have been constructed, and due to height of the buildings, the upper floors of the condominiums overlook waste transfer operations, notwithstanding the substantial earthen burn along the east side of the Violia property. In addition, the city approved the remodeling of the industrial condominium building, which is contiguous to the transfer station property on the southwest, resulting in a height increase of that building. The elevated portion of the building overlooks the transfer station. Although the transfer station has an excellent compliance history, the city appears to have embarked on a program to force the company to close the facility. This seems clear from the city's targeted rezoning of the transfer station property to a residential classification while leaving other parcels in the immediate area with industrial zoning. Moreover, the city manager has threatened to turn up the regulatory heat on Violia, even though Violia's compliance history is excellent and it's, the city has created conflicts by approving the condominium development to the east and an increase in height of the building to the southwest. The city's transfer fee ordinance is further indication of the city's intentions. The ordinance targets only those trucks using the transfer station. Garbage trucks that drive Evanston streets but do not use the transfer station are exempt from the fee, even though their impact would be the same as those using the transfer station. Furthermore, the city does not seek to impose a fee on other trucks, such as moving trucks or those delivering freight, lumber, steel, brick, or concrete. Violia employs twelve Evanston residents and is the only waste company that pays taxes to the city, yet it is the only company that will be affected by the proposed fee. Moreover, the city did not even inform Violia of the proposed ordinance. Violia only learned of the proposed ordinance from one of its customers. Indeed, the city has not reached out at all to Violia to discuss the transfer station. Consistent with past practices, Violia has been in communication with residents in the area in an earnest attempt to address their concerns. In fact, in September, Violia filed an application with the IEPA for a supplemental permit that would enable the company to make further visual improvements to the site and enhance the operating performance of the facility. Notwithstanding Violia's consistent efforts to work with the city and the community and to improve the site, the city is singling out Violia for unfair treatment, all in furtherance of its apparent objective of forcing a long-time business to close its doors. That the city is taking this action after approving the transfer station and inducing Violia to spend a substantial sum of money to improve the property is regrettable. We ask that you take our comments into consideration before voting on the proposed fee ordinance. As always, we are willing to meet with representatives of the city to discuss any issues pertaining to the transfer station. It's signed Greg Scudio, Regional Manager, Violia ES Solid Waste Midwest. It was sent to the city addresses of you all, but I noticed that some of them are not necessarily correct, so that could account for why the delivery didn't, didn't happen. So that is the letter.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman Holmes, I, I appreciate the fact that our neighborhoods near the transfer station have been living and breathing the transfer station for a long time, which raises a question in my mind as to the city's perspective on Violia's compliance with its zoning and the permit. Do we have any information about that? And second question, is there anything left to discuss with Violia at this point, from our perspective?
Is that for Alderman Holmes?
No, the question was, I think, to staff about the staff perspective on compliance and yours as well, Alderman Holmes, if, if you can share with us. I wasn't part of the discussion at AMPW, and, and I'm just needing some more information about-
Just one, let me just add, first one. Just one thing, everybody gets it confused because it borders the fifth and the second ward, but it's actually in the second ward, not in the fifth ward. And Alderman Jean Baptiste and I did have a joint meeting last week with the residents and representatives from Viola, and of which even our city manager did stop by that meeting. I, you know, I don't know where, where we are with it. We are waiting for them to come back with some answers.
I don't know whether that's a relevant issue right now. I mean, the city manager has taken a look at the various possible revenue sources that we have at our disposal and proposed a fee. And so we've discussed the various sources of revenue. This is not, if we approach this issue as you are framing it, then that, you know, it seems like we would have to discuss whether we're punishing them or not. That's not what we're trying to do. The issue is, where do we get some of the funds to do what we have to do? And we've increased permit fees in the past. We've increased transfer fees. For real estate transfer, we've increased, we've even, you know, those real estate transactions that used to be exempt, we've decided to put a fee to that. So as the city manager prepares the budget and submits the budget to us, then he makes a determination as to what are some of the potential sources of fees that he can advance to us, and we consider those things and we move forward. So this, the issue you're raising is really not relevant to a budget discussion. We did meet, as Alderman Holmes indicated, and will continue to interact with Viola to, as the neighbors have raised their complaints. That has nothing to do with whether or not Viola, you know, can be charged a fee for, you know, using our roads, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, we've done demolition fees. We've done a number of different fees. So the city, to me, Home Rule gives us a discretion to be able to determine how to move forward to raise certain funds. Now, if a particular individual challenges those fees, they do so, and then we have to answer that. But this has nothing, this has nothing at all to do with whether we are happy with Viola or not. I mean, we're happy with the development industry. We want, some of us may want more, but that has nothing to do with us imposing inclusionary housing fees and all kinds of other kinds of fees that we need in order to operate as a city.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, if I may. I just understood in this case, there might have been potential to work out an agreement for a voluntary payment of the fee, short of actually imposing one through an ordinance. And so I don't know. I wasn't at the meeting. I wasn't part of the discussions with Viola, and if they're not willing to-
That was not a burden of our-
Willing, willing to do what? I don't know. I mean, when we impose certain fees, people have, the only thing that I would say is that the fact that Viola was not notified previous, prior to putting forth this ordinance is something we could look at and say, okay, we should have done that. But since that time, when was your ordinance proposed, city manager?
I believe it came as part of the budget that was submitted to you-
Budget, right?
Mid-October.
Mid-October. So it's now towards the end of November. So everybody's on notice. The only notice Viola could have gotten is a week prior to that. But everybody has been on notice, and they've had enough opportunity, and they've intervened. They've had further discussion with our folks. But we do what we have to do in order to raise the necessary revenue in order to meet our budget obligations. None of us are happy, have been happy around increasing garbage pickup and all kinds of stuff, but we see it as a necessary thing to do. None of us are happy with the layoffs, but we see it as a necessary thing to do. So that's where we at.
You, Alderman, oh, city manager, did you-
No, no, after the Alderman.
Alderman Wilson?
Generally, I agree with Alderman Jean-Petice. This is, this was a component to the budget. The letter from Viola, unfortunately, I think, contains a number of, I'll call them assumptions, but I don't know that they're, I don't think they're fair assumptions or they're correct assumptions, at least as far as I'm concerned. This was, this was just a component, just like the motor fuel tax was a component. We're not out to run the gas stations out of town. The municipal utility tax, we're not out to run the utilities out of town. This is just a part of an overall plan, and that's really all it boils down to. I understand from the city staff, the operations do constitute a additional wear and tear on the facilities and the roads in the city, and it seems that this is an appropriate allocation to help cover the costs of those things.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I've never been to the transfer station. I've never smelled it, but I have absolutely no problem placing a $2 per ton fee on it, and never in my wildest dreams did I think we were doing this to get rid of them. I'm sure there are ways to get rid of them, go to court, et cetera, if we wanted to do that. I think we're seeing the obligatory objection to any kind of fee or license or any of that kind of thing. So I'm sorry you feel that way, but I absolutely have, my vote has absolutely nothing to do with getting rid of this organization. They're an international company, and I'm sure they can help us out and pay the $2 fee. But my vote, I want to go on record, is having nothing to do with getting rid of them because I don't even know them. I've never smelled them. I just know that they provide a service, and they provide a service, and they do, they do impact our community. And we need to start looking more carefully at all those things that impact our community. So I'm supporting the $2 per ton fee, and I think we ought to move ahead.
I agree. Alderman Grover, did you want to speak?
Madam Mayor.
City manager.
I would draw my whole, whoever seconded it, I mean-
I withdraw my second.
All right. Thank you.
City manager, did you want to speak?
Unless the city attorney is going to, who I think knows what I'm going to say. That's a better way to say it.
Madam Mayor, member of the council, I think it's also important, as the council deliberates tonight, that there's certain other issues relative to the city of Evanston and its power as a home rule municipality to regulate businesses within its jurisdiction. There are several parts of the Illinois Municipal Code that permit a home rule municipality to regulate for the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. That includes the power to regulate any business within its boundaries. That includes the power to regulate businesses that may emit, based on a community standard, noxious or unwholesome odors. Those regulations can be done through a number of ways, be it code enforcement, which is an issue that has been visited upon that particular station by the neighbors in administrative adjudication. It can also be visited upon that establishment through the imposition of a reasonable fee, which is rationally related to a legitimate governmental purpose. So I think the council in its legislative deliberations tonight can certainly consider its home rule powders, powers relative to this issue, and the regu, its ability to regulate businesses within its borders. There's also the issue relative to the transfer of solid waste within and without the jurisdiction. There's solid waste is generated. That does impact the roads, which is much more fully documented in the staff memo. But there's also a lot of other issues attendant to enforcement, which calls upon the resources and time commitment of city staff. All of that has impacts and costs to the city's staff, and I think that's also properly another, another component to the legislative findings made upon this issue, and the minutes will so reflect that. Relative to the effective date, of course, this is going to be, if this is enacted tonight, this ordinance being a fee revenue, revenue generator as part of the budget, it will not take effect until March 1st. It's my view that there would be the opportunity to have further dialogue with Viola if that was determined to be necessary in the staff, and I'm sure the council would be open to further discussions if those discussions were, of course, productive. But we're talking about an effective date with the revenue as March 1st. So having said that, I will just defer to any council questions.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, to the last point regarding the effective date, Mr. Farrar, Mr. Farrar?
Sorry, I misspoke.
If the council wishes to have the effective date be March 1st, I believe it would require an amended ordinance, is that correct?
Correct, and I believe I misspoke. Ms. Robinson indicated to me that the effective date, the revenue collection is effective January 1st. So we would have to amend-
Yeah, for the budget. So if the council wishes to have this be March 1st, then we would ask the-
It's part of the budget, right?
But the ordinance would need, would need an amendment to indicate March 1st. Otherwise, it'll be January 1st.
But the budget becomes effective March 1st, right?
That is correct.
So move to amend the ordinance to reflect an effective date of March 1st, because that's the purpose of it.
That will, in effect, reduce the revenue collection by one quarter, because we collect the revenue after the refuse has been transferred. So starting in January 1, we wouldn't collect the first quarter revenue until the end of March. So those three quarters that show in the budget are based on the clock starting, so to speak, on January 1.
So then I guess we leave it be.
Alderman Rainey?
I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. It's been, could you withdraw that?
Well, I didn't get a second in.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to enact the solid waste transfer station fee. Are we ready to vote on it, everyone? City clerk, could you call the roll?
Eight twenty, Rick.
Eight twenty.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Win?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes. Alderman Rain, Alderman Jean-Petice, that completes-
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey, planning and development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For introduction, is ordinance 99010, which grants a special use for an adult daycare center at 52426 Davis Street in the downtown four, D4 transitional zoning district. Madam Mayor, the reason this is off the consent agenda is because the committee supported an amendment to this, and that is to deny the special use request.
Thank you. Sorry.
Somebody's looking for it. All right, so it's for introduction, but the ordinance is, the committee is requesting denial of the ordinance.
All right.
Okay?
So indicate in two weeks.
Okay. Ordinance P3, I think everybody knows what happened there. There's going to be a conference with the city manager and the faith community to discuss, and the legal counsel, to discuss wording and perceptions, et cetera, regarding a special use having to do with houses of worship in B and C and downtown districts. And that, Madam Mayor, so it's being held in committee, and it is a special order of business at our next meeting.
Alderman Jean-Petice?
Madam Mayor, you had passed P1, and we didn't vote on it, but I just wanted to just make a comment on it.
Yeah, it's just being introduced.
Can I?
Go ahead.
At the end of our deliberation over P1, the landlord came up and made a statement that the property had been vacant for over a year, and that this is the first tenant that he was able to get. So I wanted to, you know, verify that information. I think it's important that we look at that significant piece of information that we received. I understand the argument that this location is not necessarily best suited for this kind of activity that we would like some commercial use. And some of us also had some concerns about this adult daycare concept. So I'd like to, as part of our process, to be prepared to make a decision two weeks or three weeks from now, I'd like to ask the city manager to, one, ask our director of health, Ivander Thomas, to look into this particular agency to better understand what it does and its credibility. Secondly, if you could also look into this notion that this place had been vacant for a year, over a year, and just bring back some information. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk? Alderman Win?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm confused about whether we need to take a vote on introducing P1.
Yes, we do.
All right, let's vote on, we're back at P1.
Madam Mayor, may I just point out that the committee voted to deny, to deny the intro, deny the recommendation of the ZBA, so-
That's what I meant.
No, I realize that, so, but introduce, but we would then be voting no on introduction. Is that correct?
We'll be voting to introduce that amended.
I clarified with-
I'm sorry.
-legal counsel that it would be appropriate to introduce a denial of the ZBA's recommendation to approve a special use. Is that correct? And he said yes.
Oh, I am sorry, Alderman Rainey. I didn't understand that that's what was going on. Thank you.
All right. Does everyone understand we're voting to approve a denial of a special use?
Introduce a denial.
Introduce. All right.
Introduce a denial.
Are we done yet?
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petice?
Aye, to introduce.
Alderman Win?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye, to introduce.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Eight to one, to introduce.
Eight to one, the motion passes. All right, back to planning and development. Does that conclude-
That's it.
-your report?
Madam Mayor, Alderman Rainey, I have a question on P3. Is it the intention of the committee to have this appear twice, then on the December 13 meeting, once in committee, and then once as a special order of business, or just as a special order of business before the-
I just, yeah, we've already, yeah.
What? I don't understand.
Special order of business.
So it will not appear on-
We'll have some discussion at committee level, though, right?
I don't, I guess.
Yes.
So it'll appear twice?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alderman Fisk, you have no report?
I know I do.
All right, Alderman Fisk.
Wait, I'm sorry. We're, oh, I don't, no.
No, we're not at Call of, well, we are now at Call of the Wards. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report, but a best wishes to everyone for a wonderful Thanksgiving, all of you and all of you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
No report.
Alderman Burris?
I'm going to sit and do my report, if you don't mind. Although I'm encouraged by the marginally more conservative revenue projections for this fiscal year, and I thank you to the city manager and the directors and other staff, I voted against the budget again this year because the budget still does not demonstrate fiscal responsibility by the council. Once again, the expenditure side of the ledger was commandeered by special interest groups to benefit the few while leaving those least likely to be able to endure irresponsible spending by the city to suffer. It is rather disappointing that the majority of elected officials continue to cast votes that are for immediate or short-term gratification rather than for long-term benefits in fiscal health. This short-sighted vision is difficult to comprehend, particularly when many of those same elected officials criticize state legislators for not standing up to the fire and police unions in order to enact pension reform. I ask you to reflect on that double standard. If local officials cannot stand up to the lobbying efforts by special interests, why would one expect state officials to take on the well-funded union lobbyists? It seems to be illogical or more aptly contradictory. I would say comical if it were not devastating for so many residents that are already struggling financially. Although my belief in the concept of implementing good government and the ability of elected officials to be fiscally responsible has waned over the past 18 months, I remain hopeful that at some point, maybe it will happen, not happen, and the city or the state are bankrupt, but hopeful that this council will in the future be fiscally responsible in preparing and administering a budget. I long for a time when elected officials come to realize that making the hard choice is usually the right choice, a time when the courage to make difficult decisions will triumph over fear of not being reelected. I am certain that this continued lack of financial self-control demonstrated by this council will reverberate negatively in Evanston for the long- council will reverberate negatively in Evanston for the long term.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, peaceful, enjoyable holiday. I want to remind all First Ward residents that our next First Ward meeting is coming up on Tuesday, December 7th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at the Evanston Public Library, and looking forward to seeing all of you there.
Thank you. Alderman Jean-Petis.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. We have a meeting coming up at Optima Views for the residents and the surrounding businesses on the 2nd of December, so keep you guys posted as to what we're doing. I just wanted to just also explain my vote on the budget. This was the first time that I've voted no on a budget. The 311 piece is still something that I couldn't get over, so I'm optimistic as to what it would turn out to be, but I have a concern that we not create a Bentley, you know, process to receive complaint, and yet have a clunker delivering the services. So, I'll be, you know, encouraging, you know, a good delivery, and also be ready to raise a criticism where I see fit. Just overall, I just wanted to just draw the, a little bit of distinction with Alderman Burris, that I'm not sure anybody on here is concerned about reelection. I mean, I understand, with all due respect, I just, I just don't think so. I think, you know, what's driving us is, you know, trying to make decent decisions about the issues that we're concerned about, and when we fight among each other, it's about whatever principles we're coming from, but I agree with you that the fight to be responsible is an ongoing kind of process. And I think that for us, the whole issue of the pension funds, you know, we will default eventually, if you continue to look at the graphs, you know, if there are no changes in legislations. For us, every year to have a bigger and bigger piece of our budget be consumed by the pension funds indicates that at some point, it'll outpace our ability to pay it. And so, I appreciate the city manager and the mayor's ongoing fight to try to see if we could get some legislative changes, but it's a tough process, and I think we need to start planning in case we do not get the changes we're looking for legislatively. How do we survive this process? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Win.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I guess just a couple of comments on the budget. It's not easy, nobody likes making cuts, nobody likes letting people go. It is a very challenging thing to do. There were a number of cuts that I did not want to support, but I felt that I had to. There were a number of items that were added back in that I voted against, not because I didn't believe in those items or believe in those programs, but I didn't believe that we can afford them right now. And as far as going forward goes, I voted for the budget because the city does have to operate, and as far as my own personal philosophy, we try to plan for the worst, but I'm going to hope for the best and hope for a good year. So, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
No report, however, I wish everyone peace and blessings for the holiday.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
No report, Madam Mayor. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. City clerk.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Petis.
Aye.
Alderman Win.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Congratulations, we passed the budget, and we're going home on the same day that we started.
Progress.
Thank you, Lino, for your gracious statement.